And I'd like to welcome everybody. The first time on the GIST, on the list, is our weekly commission reports and I usually start with Commissioner Moore, so.
Okay, I'm ready to start. So immediately after today's meeting, or shortly after, after today's meeting, I'm going to be headed to Portland for Mason Transit Authority is sending me down there for a transit conference. So I'm kind of excited to go down and learn how the other transits work, as I'm still fairly new to this one, so it'll be fun. I'm hopeful that I will make it back on Wednesday in time for Dave's going away party. So just so everybody remember to, that it's open to the public, it's Wednesday, the 25th, from 2 until 4:00. And if I don't see you then, I'll, I know where you live. So I'll tell you goodbye one way or another. Um, excuse me. There's a public hearing today at 5:30 regarding the Sierra Pacific Shoreline application on Friday. I will be back for this definitely. I'm participating in the United Way Fund Distribution interview. So we've gone out and interviewed a lot of the nonprofits and Darren is on the same committee I am. We're doing the health, not food related. So we had a lot of meetings with the people who provide services and housing and work with making our housing more safe and more affordable. So we'll be looking forward to that. So that's it for this week.
All right, Ms. McDowell?
Tonight at 5:30, I'll be attending the Shoreline Public Hearing here at Civic Center. And then I'm going to go to the theater and I'm going to see The Ring of Fire. Just like telling you that. If anyone hasn't seen that, it's, well, it's kind of boring, but it's here every year. It's here every year, so you have to go see it.
I never seen it.
I grew up in the Mason County, so I'm kind of part of it.
I like it.
And then Tuesday, I have a Mason County Board of Health. Wednesday, I have, we have Dave's reception going away party. Friday, I have an EDC roundtable and they're zooming in on industry and that's going to be at the PUD at 9:00 AM Friday. That's my week.
Thursday?
Friday.
Sure it's not Thursday?
No, it's Friday.
Okay, well, I got it written on Thursday, so maybe I'll go the day before and let you know what's happening.
And I'll go Friday and let you know what happens.
Well, yeah, well, I'll write that down and see. Okay. Well, Tuesday, I will be attending, well, first in the morning, I'll be on the radio at 8:15 on the Daybreak Show. And then on Tuesday evening, I plan to go to the library and attend a informational discussion and I guess kind of a educational thing on heroin and heroin's abuse and what it does and whatnot. And so I thought I would go and see that on Tuesday night at the library. And I got a couple of roundtables in here, and I had them Wednesday and Thursday, but it looks like one's probably on Friday, and so I'm sure I'll figure out which ones I'm going to. So anyway, that completes our, yeah.
Hi, Edwin.
Absolutely.
I neglected to mention that next Tuesday, we have the Shelton Metropolitan Park District Regular Meeting. That will be at 1:45. It's on Tuesday instead of Monday because of the Memorial Day holiday.
Thank you very much. Okay, and next is a general public comment. If anybody has signed in, wants to speak about anything, just sign in on the end of the table, and Mark will be our person that says who.
All right. Lisa Renfro.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I had some questions. One was about the tugboats. Will those be a part of the museum for, part of that for storage and are they in inventory That was one subject matter I wasn't sure about. Another one was for safety for the Roundhouse. Was wondering if they could make a children's replica that was around a different area that would be in a park-like setting where it would be safe for the children so they could participate and learn and understand history also. My other question was, do you know where exactly they're proposing to drill the Ingleside Well? The exact location? Is the 2015 map upstairs for the zoning type usage, the same as the map for the utilities?
We could probably answer that question.
I don't have a date on, I can't see.
We could probably answer that question right now for all of our information. I think it's 300 feet from the existing well. If you're talking about the well to replace, well number one.
Or wherever they were going to drill a new well.
I believe it's 300 feet from that location.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, I would like to address your other questions, and I'm not sure what you mean by the tugboats.
The ones that push the lumber in the water?
Oh, my gosh, wouldn't that be fun? So far, no, I haven't branched out that far. As far as the replica, miniature replica for a park, that's an awesome idea. I love it.
I have a picture that I found at the treasure shop today, and it's really beautiful. If I'd like to give it to you guys, maybe you could make, consider the landscaping.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it for now?
Forrest Cooper is also on the list.
All right.
Thank you very much, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm Forrest Cooper, 409 West Railroad and 807 South 14th Street. Today, I'd like to address a phrase I have heard repeated by Commissioners over and over again. The phrase is, "Let's ask the experts." The experts usually refer to our city staff, such as the city engineer, the public works director, community development, or other city staff. I'd like to remind you that these hired positions, no matter how well they do their jobs, are not always experts on all given situations. I have heard Commissioners on numerous occasions address staff as experts when in reality, the staff member has no previous experience pertaining to the presented proposal. I have let it go over and over again and watched several botched jobs, dangerous additions to our city, and wasteful spending that could have been prevented if the Commissioners would do as they are elected to do and question staff more thoroughly and have them seek out the true experts, such as state and federal agencies or professionals that are not just looking to get a job or make a sale. Even experts have areas they aren't as proficient in as further assistance would be a wise choice. Let's use an example of the mechanic that works mostly on domestic cars and has for 30 years. He might be pretty good at his job until the day the hybrid import comes into the shop. If the vehicle owner just said, "You're the expert," and let him figure it out, he might be able to. However, the repair might cost a lot more and use more parts than needed. Or even worse, a safety issue has been created that could have been prevented if the owner had expressed interest in consulting an expert on that particular type of vehicle. Let me remind you, Commissioners, it is not just your job to approve or deny items based on staff's recommendations, it's also your job to question their proposals and purchasing needs to make safe and financially responsible decisions. I strongly feel you do a great service to our city and offer this insight as a way to improve performance and not to insult it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else at this time? There's another opportunity leader in the meeting for more, so we will move forward. Are we ready for reading the consent agenda?
Yes.
Could we please have a reading of the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. 2017 Ford Escape purchase authorized the city administrator to make any necessary budget modifications.
Wow, that was correct. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I live that we approve the consent agenda as read.
I second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
The agenda passes. There's no old business at this time, but there are several items under new business. And the first will be about the Shelton Arts Commission. And at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Parks and Rec Director Mark Ziegler.
Thank you, Your Honored Commissioners. Today, I'm bringing you a recommendation of appointment to the Shelton Arts Commission. The Arts Commission currently has one open position of the five appointees developed per ordinance. Mr. Corliss, Mr. David Corliss, has submitted a letter of interest for appointment to the Commission. Mr. Corliss attended one of the Arts Commission meetings last week, so he got to talk to the rest of the Commissioners and had a good feel for what's in store for him if appointed. Mr. Corliss has an extensive background in the arts, has traveled extensively as a teacher overseas, and has also been involved in organizing community events for the arts and things like that, especially over in England. So I think he'd be a great asset to the Arts Commission. The current Commissioners agree that are sitting on the Arts Commission now, and with the city commission's approval, on the consent agenda for May 31st, Mr. Corliss would serve a four-year term through the end of 2019, fill out his term.
Questions or comments for Mark?
Aye. Congratulations, first of all, in filling that Arts Commission. And then after reading this letter, I'm so impressed by the credentials and so happy that Mr. Corliss would like to join our Arts Commission. I'm impressed.
Any other comments? I have one comment. I read the letter and I looked, that looked very impressive, but what really caught my eye and why I'm a great supporter of his is that he attended South kids have high school in Port Orchard, and that's where I graduated. Just wanted to let you know, I caught my eye and I'm all for him. Love to sit down and talk about the good old days when you could walk down the streets of Port Orchard and not wonder if a car was coming or not because they're warning you, you know. Anyway, okay, so I guess we agree with your recommendation. And it says here, let's see what we want to do, we'll just go ahead and place this on the consent agenda for May 31st, 2016.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next is a Fifth and Franklin Budget Modification, and that's going to be given into us by Mr. Greg Clark.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, we need to do a little budget modification here for the Fifth and Franklin improvements that the crew did down in conjunction with the one-way change of Franklin there. We anticipated early in the year and got it in the budget for $3,000 to do those sidewalk modifications, but when we got down and engaged in the work, we found out we needed to take out quite a bit more of the roadway and sidewalks to make it actually fit and work properly. So we spent about $8100 of additional materials, and our request is to move that from the savings that we had in 14 out of streets, and so that'll make that whole. And that's the request, and that way we can finish, finish that budget item off.
Questions or comments?
What's the plus 29,639.29 on this paper? Hi, Darren.
I don't have that paper.
Oh, you don't have that?
Maybe I do. Maybe I do. Oh, I do.
Yeah.
That's Kathy's writing. I believe that maybe was the total savings that was found in the street section for 14.
Okay. I'll ask her.
Yeah.
Well, any other questions or comments?
No, I think it's fairly clear.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's like, just like earlier, I was a contractor, and so, you know, you bid things, you look at, but you never know when a root's going to do something or an extra thing is going to happen, so I don't have a problem with this. And so I think what, if we concur, we all concur that we can take this item and, it looks like moving on to consent agenda, authorize the city administrator make any necessary budget modifications. So now we have an item, and Mr., it looks like Mr. O'Leary is going to bring this forward about our new interim city administrator position.
This is, a contract is an agreement between the city and Butkus Consulting for the, for the city administrator services. The agreement lasts until August 31st or until the new administrative administrator is able to begin work. If the contract for some reason can't be fulfilled by the end of August, then probably need to have a discussion, another discussion with Butkus Consulting. The work will be done by Pete Butkus, who's the president of the company. It'll be 30 hours, 32 hours a week. Compensation is $80 an hour. And Pete, assuming you approve the contract, and I expect that you will, the, they'll start work tomorrow morning, so there will be two days of overlap for the two of us. He'll start by attending the department head meeting, which are, which are held Tuesday The, the contract was prepared by Kathleen and subject to a little bit of tweaking that we had on technical issues mainly that were broken down over the past couple of days. My recommendation to you is that you authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
And just for the public's knowledge is that we each Commissioner had an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Butkus and talk to him for a half an hour, 45 minutes, and, you know, I think he all passed our muster or whatever, and so I think he'll be a great person to add to our staff for the interim. And I guess unless he's run out of the room, he wants the job, so what we need to do is, yeah, now's your opportunity. I mean, this is what we do. So if there's any other questions, I know that we need a motion on this one. So are there any other questions at this time? Okay, so I guess I would request a motion to approve this contract.
I will.
Yeah, oh, one question.
This is an action item, so if there was public comment?
Yes, ah, okay. So at this time, if anyone has any public comment, this is something that we welcome also. So if anybody wants to put Pete under the waffle iron or whatever, you know, this would be, you have the hot seat or whatever, this would be the opportunity. So just someone would sign in and we would do that. I don't see a group rushing forward. So I guess now I would request a motion to approve this contract.
I will make a motion to approve the interim city administrator's contract for Pete Butkus, Butkus Consulting Incorporated.
Is there a second?
My second motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve, approve this contract. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the family.
Well, I just, I want to say one thing. I'm really looking forward to you coming on board, and for those who don't know, I really value, speaking of expertise, Pete was very, very much involved in the Public Works Trust Fund and the, is that what, the board? And he has, he's like primo expertise on public works. And so I'm going to be really happy to have you around so that I can pick your, pick your brain for a couple months anyway. So welcome, Pete.
That's about how much brain power I have.
Oh, no, no, you won't have anything left when I'm finished with you. So welcome.
All right, thank you very much. All right, at this point, we're going to turn this over to our city administrator, Mr. David O'Leary, for the last time.
Seriously. Okay.
That's what it says in my notes here. Yeah, they got it written here.
So you can follow along, there's page numbers on the PowerPoint. I'm not covering every bit of information in here. Anybody else, I guess 15 of these. Put you under. Perfect, you didn't get one, but you've got the PowerPoint.
This is a project that I started several years ago. We started with a, an older system called CPM 101, and it was really an introductory system. Then subsequently, the International City Management Association changed the method and they gave us access to a broader set of measures. It was only 30 or 40 measures that we had when we did the 101. And so we were really able to pick and choose what we wanted to look at for ourselves. We worked with the department heads to do this two years ago and then updated it for There's two different kinds of measures. There's measures between Shelton and other cities. There's also some measures, and then we've just added, been able to add this for the first time this year, between ourselves and what we did the year before. The, there are 106 other cities, and we also chose 69 different measures in here, and I'm not going to cover 69, but I think what I've, what I've included in the PowerPoint, I think you'll get the gist. So they come into different categories and these headings starts with general government. And these, this is really more along the lines of what conditions are like in Shelton, more than their conditions in terms of performance. But they're, but they're instructive, and I think they help inform us about our city, maybe some things we didn't know. And how much do we spend in terms of general revenue, and that's tax income and that sort of thing, per capita in the city? And it's a little higher than normal, and this, I didn't include last year's because it's a fairly similar number, but anyhow. Now, what do, what do we have in the way of median household income? Now, the next several slides, these are just information that's taken straight out of the Census Bureau. So these are estimates that the federal government has made about how things are in Shelton for these measures. So, and there were so many, there was such a long list of cities that I, because every city that was in here, all 106 of them plugged in data, and there wasn't enough room on the sheet. So I just said under 50, and that, that gave us. So our income relative to even cities under 50,000 is pretty small, and I think that's expectable, this is, this is predictable. This is, we're a fairly low-income community, and it just shows that. Well, let's talk about breakdown in ages. There was a, there's a kind of an indication that for seniors, this would be people over 64, we have, we have a fair share of those. And last year, we had, what I've got, wanted to show the, to differentiate the measures, 2014 is shown in green and, and 2015 is shown in red. I included so many cities in this particular group that there wasn't room for all of them in there, but, but when you see where it's green, it's Shelton in green in 2014 and under red, even if you don't see the name, it's, it's for 2015. And the curious thing about this is that, by the way, you can, if you go to page 12, you can see the details on that, on these slides. In fact, if you look in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see, you can follow along in your book there. And there was quite, uh, 12, there was quite a drop in the, in the number of seniors, which was kind of curious. We went from 15% to 13%. So does that mean that we're getting more young people? And if you look at the next slide, percent of youth under 18 years, and it looks like we are. We're actually got a few more people under 18. So the demographics have shifted just a little bit, just from one year to the next, and it looked like quite a big difference to me. What about, you know, what about people with a college degree? And I, I included this because there was an increase.
Wow.
And it went from 10% in 2014 to 14% in 2015. So I'm not sure I know why that is, but it's an interesting statistic and one that informed us a little bit about what, about maybe some things that are happening in the community.
And this is just over one year period?
Just over one year, yeah. And these, these aren't any statistics that we put together, these are just straight out of the census data. So the next one's property tax per capita, and I think that our people in Shelton pay a fair amount of taxes. And I think we're, we're at least medium in the broader world, which you might expect to be a little bit low because of our low-income status, but frankly, Shelton residents have stepped up when we've had problems due to the economy. They've deliberately raised their own taxes, and so it might have been lower, except for some of the decisions that they've made as voters in the past several years. Sales tax per capita is interesting in that it's pretty, is that they're very similar. I'll be curious to see, be interesting to see what we get for 2016, but in 2015, there's a little bit less, which is predictable, given what's happened to us in, with the mill closure last year. And so that doesn't help us to resolve our financial problems when sales tax drops, but it's predictable, and frankly, it could have been worse than what we're seeing here. Unemployment rate is actually, the only, the difference between those two is 7 and 7.01, so there's not that much difference in unemployment rate. Still not as good as a state, which is in the range of 5.5. So again, we got, we got a ways to go with our recovery from the economy. So code enforcement, there's a lot of interest in, in code enforcement in the, you know, of course, in the city. So this is, this is a measure of workload for our employees that are working in code enforcement. And it's kind of middle ground, maybe a little higher than what it is in other organizations, at least the top end, but you can see that, that there's actually fewer cases last year there's from 2014 to 2015, which was kind of a surprise to me, but anyhow, nevertheless where it came out. In terms of complaints per thousand population, that's actually increasing. So we got more people who are making complaints about this. By the way, this was put together really quickly, much, a little quicker than we ordinarily do it, and so there might be some errors in it, but I think, I think overall, it's worthwhile showing, but, but I didn't, one of the steps I usually follow is to release it to the department heads in advance of any disclosures, get their feedback before we tell anybody else, and there just wasn't time to do that. So this was the last meeting that I had to do it, so here we are. But I think that, again, it's, it's worth looking at regardless. And a number of, this is complaints per thousand population again. Case of voluntary compliance, this is a, this is a big statistic, and it's something we've been talking about, heard about internally. It's such a big move that what, what staff has told me, what Steve Goins has shared, is that we've picked the low-hanging fruit, that what's left in terms of code enforcement are the diehards, the ones that really won't haul off all that junk, the ones that really won't clean up. And so the, there's already a strategy in play to deal with that, where they're talking about running up, increasing the game, pushing more and more pressure on these folks, but then you'll just have to when you get to a certain point, if you're going to keep the progress going. And again, the same kind of statistics for days to force compliance, where you, you know, you actually take them through an administrative or judicial process. Abatement costs per case, it actually shows a drop. I think that's a deliberate attempt. I think what Steve's doing is he's trying to keep money, he's trying to get one or two big projects done instead of the little projects that we've been doing. So instead of spending as much as we have in prior years, he's actually throttled it back, and he's pigeonholing the money so we can get some big things done. You may, it's probably something you want to take up in the future about that, whether that's where you want to go. This is our equipment maintenance, it's essentially our fleet, and I included three statistics in there that we didn't have last year because it's so striking to me, and we didn't have very good statistics last year. This year, we're doing much better, so I felt more, I felt that they were real. Essentially, our stuff, our equipment is, is getting on toward the end of its useful life in public works, and the, and these are, this is light-duty vehicles, that stuff that's under 10,000 pounds, so it's basically on, it's a pickup trucks and things like that. And, and the useful life on those things is, well, we're at the top of the chart in terms of used-up stuff. Same thing for medium-duty vehicles, and this is between, this is under, between 10 and, basically 10 and 20,000 pounds. And your heavy-duty things, we're still the same. So our equipment is pretty old and getting older, and at some point, it'll have to be refreshed. One thing that is getting better, and you're going to see, and assuming you keep doing this, keep looking at these numbers into the future, you'll see changes that are even better than these numbers. 2015, mid-2015, we actually changed systems, changed some personnel in EM and R based on what we were getting from these, this program. And it's, and the reason you see better numbers there is because of the results that we got. reason you see better numbers there is because of the results we got to part of the year. So, once you get a full year's worth of history in there, this percentage build to paid hours will increase significantly. So, anyhow. What that means is you've got people that are doing what you've got, you set up the EMNR fund to do, which is working on the equipment, and you're getting equipment done. As you can see, based on the age, we really need to put a lot of effort into that regardless. So, this is about facilities. And this isn't a measure of performance. It's just a measure of what we have. And if you look around at all the facilities, we actually have quite a lot of facilities compared to many cities, you know, per person in the city, in Shelton. I think that's on purpose. We built this building. We built some other buildings. We're in good shape as it relates to facilities. When you start growing again, then the numbers will start to shrink back, and you'll have to decide whether you want to keep up or whether you want to, you just want to shoehorn them in. That's curious to me, because I think we're pretty close to capacity right now, at least on administrative buildings. But I think that other cities actually have, are more shoehorned in than what, based on these numbers here. So, you'll have to decide as, when growth comes back out, what you want to do with that, or whoever's here will. Now, this is, these are custodial costs, and actually, this is on the mid-range costs for square foot. And so, we're doing okay on that. Repair, let me see. These are custodial costs, and then these are repairs. And they're actually kind of low. I think that's largely because so much of our stuff is fairly new. So, and it isn't as likely to break as older stuff. But it's getting older, so it's going to surprise us. This is in human resources. And this is just the average years that employees have been here. And you can see it's about-
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah.
But how, you had, you said one hundred and sixty cities or something were players in this?
Yeah, but all of them didn't fill out, didn't participate in all the measures.
I guess my question, I'm seeing some of these, you've got about fifteen, and some you've got about six. How did you determine which six to pick out?
They self-selected.
They self-selected.
They decided whether we're going to submit a measure in order to compare ourselves to the others for that measure.
Okay.
So, you'll have, you know, some of the original ones we had were practically, I had to eliminate them because there were so many of them. But in this measure, for instance, average years of service, some, a lot of cities just didn't, just didn't-
That's taken into, it isn't randomly picked. You picked up to make us, overall, the same thing as if you, we'd be on the same chart if there was one hundred and sixty as if there's ten. Same position on the graph, right?
No, not necessarily. I mean, there's a bit of, I think you need greater numbers in order to be able to make it, to give a higher level of certainty as to your predictability. But the fact is, is that in a lot of these cases, we're showing the, but I still think that there's a fair level of reality, based on the fact that we've got the same place for two years.
Yeah, a lot of them are real close. Okay, thank you.
So, this is just how long people have worked here. And on average, you're at twelve, and that appears to be in the middle of the pack. Salary costs per capita, you know, that's actually dropped a bit, and we're in the middle of the pack again. Percentage of employees in the unions, that was always an interesting measure. And the fact is, is that it's dropped a little bit. Let me get to page forty-four here. And, which was a kind of a curious result to me, and I'm not exactly sure. That's on page forty-three rather than forty-four. Sorry, I did that this morning. And went from seventy-seven percent down to seventy-three and a, seventy-two and a half. So, that's just a few employees, given that we've only got eighty people, full-time employees here. But it's still a, it's an interesting statistic.
So, would that be because maybe some have moved on, and we haven't filled those positions?
Trying to think about, not now, but maybe now, but maybe so. Maybe we just have fewer people in union spots relative to non-union spots.
Okay.
But it's hard to draw that parallel because we, it's between 2014 and 15 rather than what's happened in 16, which is, of course, where our focus is right now. Percentage of, percentage employee, let me see. Turnover rate, and this is basically, how many recruitments do you have to do? And you can see that we're actually, turnover rate is actually lower now than it was. But it's going to be, going to be higher regardless because people are retiring.
Gosh, you look at Virginia Beach, and it's three hundred and thirty-nine percent. What are they doing? They throwing them out the windows and ripping them off?
Yeah, I didn't even include, that one looked like a mistake.
That must be.
Frankly, yeah.
I wonder if it's more like thirty, thirty-nine percent or thirty-three percent.
Yeah, keep in mind that what I-
Because that means they got rid of all, plus they pulled people off the street and got rid of them too.
What I did was, when you see this one here, this Virginia Beach, it has, it's in a slightly different shade, it's kind of a brownish-purpleish color. And if you're seeing it, if you're seeing a great big number at the bottom, that means that it looked like an outlier to me, which means that probably, it was doing two things. Number one, when you put three hundred and thirty-nine up against four point five and ten, it makes those little numbers look like nothing. And so, the other thing is that it didn't really look valid. I mean, how do you have three hundred and fifty percent turnover, three hundred and forty percent turnover? It just didn't look like somebody made a mistake.
Yeah.
So, I just, so I showed it there, but I didn't want to leave it. So-
All right.
Let me see. Days to recruit, this is a performance measure for our HR department. And it's taking a little bit longer to do the recruitments now, or, excuse me, it's taking a shorter time to do the recruitments now than it did before. Hours of sick leave for, sick leave was something I wanted to show here because, because it's something that we've been working on, working on the police department especially. And we've had some results. I mean, went from, was it seventy-six days a year? Let me see. Let me get the number out here. Yeah, seventy-six hours per police officer. And it went, it's gone down to fifty-two, which is pretty good. In the, as to employees, it's also dropped, but to a lesser extent. So, from seventy-eight to sixty-nine, it's still pretty good. So, that's been helpful. It's kind of a hard statistic to use, because really, if you have, you could have an extended illness or something like that, and that could mess up your statistics.
Sure.
So, something you want to keep watching year after year. But generally, if you account for that, and you see a movement, that's a good thing to happen. This for IT. I talked to Tim about this. It was so striking to me, because it's generally, what we've been doing has been adding information technology. And these are endpoints, which means that's a place where they provide service. So, it's a computer, it's a laptop, it's a phone, it's something like that. And there's actually a drop in the number of endpoints that we've had. So, I asked Tim about that, and he says, because we had so many different things that were functionally out of service. So, we had, somebody would leave, and then you have a computer left over. Well, they're still counting as an endpoint, but there's not much happening with it. So, they've gone through, they've cleaned up the inventory, they've gotten rid of stuff that was still on the books that was not there. And so, it's some good work that we've been able to do in IT. And so, and it shows us that we have a more normal number of endpoints as opposed to something that's kind of high. This was showing high last year, too. That number, we might not have had Bowling Green and, yeah, and Peachtree, because I think that we had among the highest in the measures group that we had. And this is per thousand population. So, this is comparing the amount of computers that we have to the population of the community. And again, you can see the drop, and it's gotten us down to a more moderate level. Let me see. And this is just, this is pure performance, and it's one measure, and there's a few more inside the book. The percentage of cases resolved in under four hours. So, that's probably a function of how complex is your system, because more complex things take longer than that. But it also is a reflection of whether they can get in, they can get something stalled, and then get on to something else. And we do pretty well, I think. It's showing low, but I don't believe it. They give me good service, so. And then the annual, what it costs us for IT, we're actually, this is a pretty good deal. It's going to go up, because we were only in a portion of 2015 if we had two employees working in IT. Now, we have more than that. So, we're going to, we're going to see, again, you'd see that next year, a higher number, something that's more in the moderate level. I've always believed in supporting the IT work. And the reason is that we need, we have fewer and fewer people to do more and more work. And typically, those, that IT stuff has given you additional productivity. And so, it's generally worth the money. You've got to look at it for each thing, but I think it's generally worth the money. So, I've pushed it pretty hard that we use that stuff. Parks and Rec, there's no comparative measure in here, because it's the kind of thing that doesn't really change. It's in the acres of population per thousand population. And ours is fairly low, so we have not as many parks as a lot of places do. Trail miles, we actually do better. We have good trail miles relative to population. And I think that's actually going to get better over time, too, based on the plans that I'm seeing. The maintenance expense is kind of high. It's showing high, I'm sure. But there actually has been an improvement in the maintenance expense on an acre basis. Let me say before we leave that, that we've had enormous challenges in parks and recreation with the loss of, due to the prorationing with the property taxes. We thought we had the department all set, when the voters approved a, the formation of a Parks and Recreation District, Metropolitan Park Recreation, Park District. And then, we bumped up against maximum collections, and they lost money. I'll say Mark Ziegler has done an excellent job of keeping that program going under pretty adverse circumstances. He, there wasn't, there wasn't any place else to go for him to go. So, we just had to make it work, and he did. And so, well done. Permitting, just thought I'd give you some stats on the commercial permits per thousand population. Now, these are a little different, and because they're, because mainly our commercial and residential permits are alterations rather than new construction. Nevertheless, there is activity in the department that I thought you'd want to see. And we have a, on that basis, there's, we have a modest level of those. And as you can see, there's a little bit less in the way of commercial permit activity. And then, there's a little bit less in the way of residential activity between 2000 and 2015, 2014 and 15. This is a reflection of the change that we've recently had. We used to have in-house review, and we've, and then we've lost ground here. We've lost an enormous amount of ground. It was a day and a half review for a residential permit. And now, it's up to, you know, it's a ten-day turnaround, on average, for us to approve a residential permit, because we're using a consultant rather than in-house staff. And it just takes them that long to do it. Commercial permit, days to process a plan review, and that's, for a commercial, it's up to about thirty. So, and then, the wait days for inspection is just a day and a half. So, we really haven't lost any ground in terms of the time it takes to get a permit done, just the time to get it reviewed. And wait days to inspection for commercial permit, same.
How about La Vista? It takes a hundred and forty days. So, just be glad we're not living in La Vista, huh?
Seriously, yeah.
How big is La Vista?
I'm sure it's small.
It's in the, I don't know the individuals. There's a list of them at the start of the book, Kathy.
That's a big jump, from eighteen days to a hundred and forty days.
Okay, police officers, this is a, this is a statistic that a lot of people used to use, is, well, how, you know, are we providing adequate law enforcement, or how many police do we have relative to the population? I don't think it's particularly valid, but it's an interesting, kind of old-school number that's interesting to look at. And we don't have a lot, and it's consistent relative to the population. So, our guys, as you'll see later, tend to be rather busy, and partly due to that. The ratio of civilians to officers, so how much, how much support staff do you have relative to the number of officers that are out there? It's a fairly low ratio. I didn't have this number last year, so I didn't, not showing it. Overtime cost per officer, actually, we're spending a little bit less on that. I know that Darren's been trying to manage that, so a good, well-done on that. The number of calls that get dispatched per officer, they're slightly less, but it's a real high number. And it's no surprise there. We have a fairly high crime rate. We have low officer-to-population ratio. Yes, Camilla?
More.
Sorry, it increases more, yeah. So, we are increasing. I get the green, I did this, and I get the green and red. Thanks for helping. Okay. The DUI arrests per thousand population is bumped up, is bumped down. The, I'm not sure why. I'm not sure, we just have fewer people working it, or whether we're having an impact.
Lost our DUI grant. The person that manages that last year, that went away.
Okay, so. Crimes against persons, and you'll have to tell me the crimes against, you'll have to give me the details on the crimes against society. I forgot what that was since last, because we didn't get a chance to talk. Crimes against persons per population, a slight decrease, and again, fairly high. Crimes against property, these are generally the violent crimes, by the way. Crimes against property, this is based against the population. And although we're slightly better, still, we're improving, but we're still not, we're still not at the top. There aren't a lot of measures here to compare to, but every one that we've ever done on crime rate indicates that we're one of the highest. So, crimes against society, and what does society mean? What kind of crime is-
Generally, generally, they're victimless crimes.
Yeah.
Not a specific victim.
Okay. So-
Or like where the state is, like even a narcotics violation, violation of the law, but not necessarily.
Now, there's improvement there, but I, we didn't get a chance to talk, so I wasn't sure what happened on that. First time you're seeing it, so. All right, so, well done. Moving violations per officer, I think that we'd probably do more of this if we were, but we're so busy doing calls. I think that, I don't know that we're doing as much traffic as we might have done. Traffic injuries per thousand have actually dropped, but it, you know, still, and there's some places that are crazy high. I don't know, maybe they've got a specific road or something like that that tends to cause crazy, bad crashes. But anyhow, we did get better. Streets, the, these, I was really interested in showing this measure, because it's going to get a lot better. When the voter-approved increase goes, we're going to show a lot more money spent on streets. This is going to get better, along with the condition of the streets in the city. So, and then solid waste, one measure. And this is tons recycled for residential account. This is a tough nut in Shelton. There's a, it's kind of, for whatever reason, there's a cultural resistance to recycling. And it used to be, at least in comparison to others, we used to have a lot lower number than we have in over 2014 and 15. And, but there's just been a real valiant effort within that to try to get, convince more people to recycle. Also, the numbers got better for us when we switched to alternate, alternate weeks, recycling and garbage collection. So, anyhow, that gives you an indication of where the- where the city is on, on these performance measures, and where we are relative to other cities on other measures. I, I think the frustration that you're having over, do we have enough other cities that are putting up this measure to reach statistical significance? And I think it's questionable whether you do or not. And the fact that they're self-selecting, I mean, the cities that you're putting up, they're, those are the ones that put up the measures, so they're the ones that are gonna be interested in it. I'm not sure what that, but it could have an impact on the comparative numbers. But, and so, there's some question there. But the thing that is not under question is how we did, how we're doing relative to what we did before. Are we getting better at doing something, or are we getting worse at doing something?
Absolutely, that's a good, a good, this is only the second year we've done this.
Yeah, this, with this depth, yeah.
And hopefully, we can continue on. I think it's a good, it's a good thing, by myself, you know. And it's fairly inexpensive, it's not extreme expensive.
It was-
This comes out of Pete's wage, right?
Yes.
Right off the top.
Just kidding.
It costs about, there's, you can spend anywhere from around, I don't know, $800 or $900 up to about $10,000, depending on what kind of data services and what, what level of service you want out of the organization that does it. The, we've spent around, I think, $1,200, $1,500 in order to participate, plus it's taken me about a week's worth of time to produce this report from the statistics that come in. And the only reason we're able to do it is because I actually have a, in past life, I was, I worked as a volunteer computer programmer. And so you, there's a certain amount of programming you gotta do, because the data comes in in a format that's not useful for doing these kind of reports. But I, I've actually written the computer programs that convert the data into something that we can use, and that's why we're getting this for-
This is really good.
For $1,500 plus-
Yeah.
Plus maybe, I don't know, $2,000 worth of my time, give or take.
And then in the end, you know, we'll be able to save, you know, make things more productive by-
Yeah.
It just exposes how you are too with other, other cities, and a lot of ways, and so.
Well, and you, you always get people, before we start doing this, a fairly constant question was, how are we doing relative to other cities? I mean, because, and you are kind of out here by yourself, you really don't know how you're doing. Every now and then, and we've done this, you find something that goes, holy smokes, what's going on here? And I think that, that happened in our EMNR. And it wasn't, nobody was doing anything bad, nobody was doing anything deliberately wrong, they just didn't know that there was another way to do something. So it gives you a red flag, you go in, and you can work on it in a way that will make it better and more efficient. And, and people are doing things because it's the way they've always done it, and you, gives you a chance to look at it with fresh eyes. And again, there wasn't anything going on there that was, that I, I felt to be nefarious, or lazy, or, I mean, they're working hard, they just weren't, they were just doing it their way instead of a better way.
Sure.
That's good.
All right, thank you very much.
Can I ask a quick question?
Well, this is a general public comment right here, so, you already signed in, right?
Well, actually-
I'm actually-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is there any way to get work comparables from our state or even the West Coast? Because there's so many of these comparables that are Midwest and East Coast, which is such a different region than what we're dealing with. Is this just all based off of cities that participate in the program?
You want to answer that, Mr. Larry?
Yes, there has been quite an effort, and I've participated that, in that as much as I can amongst the cities and counties within Puget Sound, mainly cities, in that region. And they, but the trouble is, is that they, they're in and they're out, they're not staying with it consistently. Bellevue, which of course is kind of hard to be comparison Bellevue, but they're, but they're constantly in it. They're, they're really, have made a commitment to, as you see them year after year. Some of the other cities, they've, they've, they've been in and they're out. So that, again, that's another challenge that you'd mentioned about your comparisons with your cities. And I honestly think the best value in this is, is not necessarily what you get from other cities, it's what you, is what, how you compare yourself from one year to the next. And, and so if your, if your philosophy is to try to get better every year, then this is the, this is one way that you can do it, that, that uses real numbers instead of just a, you know, something maybe a little more political. So.
All right.
I got one more, I got one more report thing.
Want to do?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you do your report thing then?
Okay. Just, just wanted to report, I think probably everyone here knows about, there was a fire over on Grove Street over the weekend, or actually over Friday night. The building was totally gone, and they put a, put a lot of water on the fire. We still don't have information on, we haven't collected all the information yet on what the, what the impacts were. We did discover, I think, some limitations on our fire system that, that might be a challenge to fix, might have to do some workarounds on them. But anyway, but I, I'm gonna have to leave the rest of it for a later time, once the, all the facts are in. So, but we did, it was an old building, it was abandoned. I think the building did have, based on what we heard in commission meetings a, a couple of years ago, there were some historic features within the building, it was an old hotel, that are lost now, of course. And also, no one was hurt. So-
The kitties.
Well, no human beings, yeah.
Kitty hotel.
Okay, yeah.
So Dave, excuse me, but I'm anticipating that we'll have a report both from public works and from fire, as far as how our fire flow did and what the total amount of water used just?
Well. We'll have that report.
Okay, yeah. And I think one thing, speaking of that, when I looked at that, I'm just thankful that it wasn't one of the buildings that was attached to wood frame or other buildings adjacent. I think this should be a wake-up call for all of us, as far as we need to make sure that we have adequate fire flow.
All right. Any, I think we have another general public comment, period, if anybody would like to speak. Why don't you stand up, and you've already signed in, Lisa, so.
Thank you, again. Yeah, your disaposits' report didn't include any persons under 65 that were disabled, more like people who are disabled under 55, don't really have as many benefits or abilities for low-income housing to suit their needs. They're on a waiting list, just like everybody else for a one-bedroom, like I was saying at the other meeting. So with, with this appostices report, if they could have, include one, to find out how many people there are who are under 65, who are disabled, who don't have the homes or the services that they need, because there's this tour guide, says 50 and better activities center. Well, you have a senior center for people over 50, evidently, they must need some assistance at that age, where people can reach out to other people. But they should get like discounts for activities and other things for either tax exemption or, or be on the list, or have a senior residential development for people over 50 who are not quite 55, because it seems like, oh, if you're 55, you can move here. If you're 60, you can move here. But you have this brochure that says if you're 50, you can participate. Well, how can you participate if you don't have affordable housing so you can pay to go to all these activities?
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? General public comment, period. Seeing none, administration final touches.
It really is, isn't it?
Here you go, this is your final touch right now.
Final, final touch, yeah. Have any touches? Anybody bringing something? No touches, Your Honor.
All right, our next meeting will be Tuesday, because Monday is a holiday. May 31st at 6, at, oh, it's at 2:00 PM?
Yes, the 5th.
Oh, wow. I was going, wait a second, that can't be, that's right, that's the 5th meeting. So it's May 31st at 2:00 PM, due to observance of Memorial Day, this meeting is adjourned.
Don't forget the Metropolitan Parks District meeting, 1:45.
1:45, that's right. And I can forget those, and I don't want to, so, tell me about that. Thank you.
Let's hear it for Dave.